Great to see everyone this morning. Thank you for being here and participating. At this time, I'll call the work session for the August 13th, 2019 Polton County Board of Commissioners to order. And Brian, if you'd bring that list up, please. If you've got your cellphone on like I do, I need to turn that off. Extremely pleased always to see Pastor Todd Gaddis of First Baptist Church here to share with us a prayer and lead us in the pledge allegiance to the flag. And he is an author. An author. He is an author. Sandy just got his book there, so we can... I've already read it. It's awesome. But come forward, if you would, Todd, and lead us in prayer. Stand if you're able.
I'm going to read a passage of scripture.
How's that? Oh, great. I want to read a passage of scripture. I won't preach a sermon, I promise. But Proverbs 3:5 and 6 says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and do not lean on your own understanding; and all your ways acknowledge him, and he will make your paths straight." So it is an honor to be here. My prayers are with you. People say, "Well, I wouldn't want your job." And I'll say that to you guys, I wouldn't want your jobs. I know it's tough keeping everybody happy. You can't do it. But this county is in a strategic place, right here on the western edge of the metro, Atlanta, being, I think, like the eighth-largest city now in the nation. And we're growing, so we've got to meet the needs of the people and make wise choices. And I'm rooting for you, I want to know that. Whatever the church can do to let us know. But the main thing is, we seek God and seek His guidance, and He will guide us, as the scripture says. Father, we thank you for the day. You are a mighty and awesome God. This is the day that you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. I thank you for the privilege of opening this meeting with scripture reading and prayer. Lord, we know that any government, any nation, is doomed without seeking you and seeking your guidance as the one true God, Lord. And so we're doing that today, Lord. I thank you for these men and women in positions, elected positions, Lord, and paid positions, whatever it is. Just be with our county, Lord. I pray for our leaders. I pray for our schools, all of our first responders. And because, Lord, it's just there are a lot of people, a lot of cars out there driving around. There's a lot going on. People are moving in. Sometimes it's overwhelming. But we want this to be a safe place. We want this to be a place where people can raise their families and make a living and make the best out of this life that it can be on this so fallen earth. And we're grateful there's a better place ahead. And so we lift the business that is conducted. Lord, I know there's people that disagree on issues. I know there are different viewpoints. But we also, the Bible says unity is a great thing, and so help us to arrive at that. Pray for our cities, our county, our state. Georgia's a great state, Lord, one of the best. We want it to stay that way. And we pray for our nation, and we know it is the best. We want it to stay that way, Lord. We pray for our leaders. So we commit this time to you. We pray the Holy Spirit would descend upon this place and grant wisdom and guidance, in Christ's name. Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Pastor Gaddis. So much appreciated. Under minutes, and I am remiss in not recognizing elected official Sheriff Gary Gullidge. Thank you for being here. The July 23rd, 2019, 9:00 AM public hearing minutes and the July 23rd, 2019 work session minutes and the July 23rd, 2019 6:00 PM public hearing minutes and the July 23rd, 2019 board meeting minutes are all available for review. Under the Positively Paulding segment this morning, one of the LPA classes has done a great thing out at Veterans Park, so we're going to check that out.
We're here with Dee Hunter and Chris Riedau from Leadership Paulding 29 to talk about their class project that was recently installed in Veterans Park. Dee, could you tell us a little about the project?
So Leadership Paulding classes are tasked each year with providing a service project to the citizens of Paulding County. Leadership Paulding 29 class, which is the best class ever, collaborated and decided to honor the sacrifice of Paulding County residents who have served in the armed forces. This year, we named our project Land of the Free and Home of the Brave.
Chris, could you tell us some details about the project?
Absolutely. Being a huge supporter of the military, I was really pumped about this project. So what the class did is we created life-size silhouettes that we've mounted to the back of the amphitheater. It's to a backdrop of the American flag. It's cut out of sheet metal, and it's even lighted at night, so passerby's can enjoy it, as well as people that are enjoying the park during the day. The project could not have happened without generous donations from numerous businesses throughout Polton County.
Well, it's a great addition to Veterans Park, and I want to say thank you to your class for all that you've done to make it happen.
It was our pleasure.
Great video there, and good job, everyone. Felicia and Jeff and Mr. Haygood in the back, thank y'all for putting that together. We have no invited guests this morning under bid awards. Number one is discuss action to award the contract to install the communication cabling for the adult detention and law enforcement center to the low bidder net planner systems in the amount of $368,364.41. And this is located in post two, Ms. Pollard's going to present.
Well, we're getting to the inside of the building. So here comes quite a few furniture and fixtures to complete the jail program. This one is the cabling for the building itself. We had three bids. They ranged from $362,920.60 up to $722,096.37. CPS, Comprehensive Program Services, have reviewed the bids, and they are confident with the low bid. And so we're asking for award to net planner systems. Unless you have any questions? And we have Eric available. Also, I think he's going to give an update, which will probably touch on some of these.
Okay, moving right into number two for bid awards. Is discuss action to award the design installation of the adult detention center radio system to diversified electronics in the amount of $90,835. Ms. Pollard?
Also, inside the facility, there is a radio system that has to be able to communicate with the outside. We currently use diversified electronics for all of our maintenance and new equipment needs and replacement for the radio system. We have David Mumford here in case you have any questions regarding this. But we are recommending award for the radio system to be installed into the facility in the amount of $90,835.
And number three is discuss action to purchase the inmate dayroom furniture from Georgia Correctional Industries in the amount of $90,420.
This is the first, I'm sure, of several pieces of furniture that we'll have. But these are steel tables, and they are recommending that we purchase them from Georgia Correctional. And if you'll recall, over the past couple of years, we've purchased furniture occasionally from them. This is inmates labor that's used to construct the furniture. And the quote was $90,420 to purchase these tables. And it compares with a public purchase, the price range up to about $213,015. So we're recommending award to Georgia Correctional in $90,420.
And number four is discuss action to purchase a diesel-powered... Before I read the rest of number four, number three all pertain to the jail, and one of our citizens requested that, as part of the briefing, we know where the money's coming from.
Okay. This is from the bond issue that we issued, and it's a portion of that budget was furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And that's where these three purchases are coming from.
Thank you. Okay, number four, discuss action to purchase a diesel-powered backup pump for the Smith Road lift station from Xylem in the amount of $56,653.30. And the location here is post one, Commissioner Davis.
A couple of months ago, we had the requirement made to the system that we needed a backup generator for the... or a backup pump for the Smith Road lift station. This is to be completed by October. And our pumps are currently purchased. They're flat pumps, and they're purchased from this same vendor, so that we have all of our maintenance issues are easier to take care of. And so we're... Sorry. Requesting award to Exilem in the amount of $56,653.30. And Laurie can give you more if you need it.
And that's general fund?
Water. It'll be water and sewer fund.
Number five is discuss action to award the contract to construct the slab for the Drug Task Force building to the lowest responsible bidder, A2 carved in stone, in the amount of $49,320.
Recently, we've worked with Drug Task Force to allow them to construct a building here in Paulding. They've agreed to share that cost with us. But we're going to... The facility will be ours to manage. And so today, we have five and six. One's for the slab. Number five is for the slab. We issued quotes for this, because the amount didn't require a full add. And we're recommending award to the low bid, A2 carved in stone, in the amount of
Any questions? Good backup material on all of this. Number six will be discuss action to award the contract to construct the metal building for the Drug Task Force to the lowest responsible bidder, Ward Humphrey, general contractor, in the amount of $85,000.
This, again, was awarded to the low bid. We had two participants, and the bids ranged from $85,000 to $98,650.35. This is a general fund project with the state participating up to 50%, up to $250,000.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Pollard. Under reports from committees and departments, Mr. Jason Phillips, our county attorney, is responding to the bond question that was brought up in our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The bond question specifically that was asked by Commissioner Davis asked me to look into the issue from a legal perspective. And the issue was whether the Industrial Building Authority, the IBA, must repay Paulding County for any film studio bond payments, since the film studio had recently sold to a third party. I have reviewed this matter. I've reviewed the various bond documents. That included the bond validation order. There's an intergovernmental contract. It was validated by the court. I've reviewed the constitutional amendments involving the IBA. And I've also had three conversations with bond counsel for those underlying 2011 bonds for the film studio. My legal conclusion is that there is no express or mandatory legal requirement that the IBA repay Paulding County for those bond payments. And I reached that conclusion based on the following. First off, the film studio itself is not collateral for the bonds. The collateral for the bonds is validated by the court, is an up-to-one-mill taxing authority of Paulding County. The intergovernmental contract that was validated by the court stated that those bond payments are the, quote, "absolute and unconditional obligation of Paulding County." Inside the bond documents, the IBA has the express authority to use sale proceeds, revenue proceeds, from the film studio for any lawful purpose, including further economic development projects within Paulding County. One of those lawful purposes is it does have the authority to use those proceeds to repay the county for the bond payments, but it is not a mandatory requirement. The order that was validated by the court back in September, state law provides that that validated bond order, which set out the intergovernmental agreement, is forever conclusive against the county. For those reasons, it was my opinion, and is my opinion, that IBA is not under a mandatory obligation to repay the county, although it does have discretion to use those funds for economic development purposes, other lawful purposes. And one of those purposes would include repayment of the bonds if it was so inclined.
Thank you, sir. We're always privileged to have Mr. Eric Johnson and Amy with us to update us on the continued progress at the jail.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. Again, thank you for your introduction. Eric Johnson with Comprehensive Program Services. Give you a quick update on the jail project. Things seem to be going very well, as you can see out back. And some of the items that we are talking about, we'll cover it here, too. We do have a line item for the furniture, fixtures, and equipment that is outside of the construction costs, which is kind of what we usually deal with when we're here, and the status of construction. As you can see, everything that we feel appropriate to put on the website, we put on pauldingjail.com. So, project update. And this is change order number four. Amy Tiszenczek, when the item comes up, she'll get into it a little bit more in detail. But basically, it's the changes you see right there. And I want to highlight that these changes that we have, when we bring these to you, are all that are required for the sheriff's office to operate and maintain this facility the way that we originally had the program set up. Okay? So there's no extras or anything else that we're putting into there. One of the things is the bi-fold doors. That is required for operations and security reasons. And when we come to these changes with you, we make sure that the price that you pay would be the same price that you would have paid on bid date. Okay? We're very cognizant of that. We have a lot of backup, just like we do with the FFNE. I mean, reams of backup on this. So with that, we'll get into the change order number four when that comes up for discussion. Project budget update, same from August 2019. And I'll give you another right here in a minute where we are projected for the overall project. But as you can see, August 2019, down there, that furniture fixture and equipment item, the $2,250,000, the items that were covered by Tabitha, will be coming out of that line item. And CPS is managing that, the procurement with Paulding County, to get competitive prices on all that. Unforeseen costs, I think we've talked about these. We felt it was important to list them out. Again, we've talked about most of these in the past. I would highlight that if you take the city tap fee out of this calculation for changes, the change order is what we have down below. The change orders currently totaling or less than... It's actually a little bit less than 3.33%, but of the overall GMP total cost of $58 million. In a project like this, typically, we budget for 5%, which we did. But there were a lot of things up on that list that hit this job that we really had no control over that we had to take on before we really even broke ground. So anyway, we've talked about a lot of those. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on any of these. So budget through completion. So as you can see up there, we have raised the furniture fixture and equipment budget from $2,250,000 to $2,900,000. There was a lot... There's a lot of reasons for that. But one, we thought we could get things done. If you recall, in the past, we were kind of moving budgets around. We thought we might have enough money in FFNE to share with the construction cost, which we did. When we got down to it, we really needed... We actually had originally $3 million budgeted for the FFNE. We've got it at 2.9, and we think that's what the number's going to be. We, right now, we're projecting that the overall project cost, projecting, is $72.8 million. That is everything that we feel today, and we feel in general, that's going to hit this job. I know there's $72 million worth of bonds that were sold. Again, this is an outside number. There's a number of things we're working on that are going to drive that number down. But we wanted to give you an accurate projection of where things were today. We think we'll be able to bring that number down, and we're working diligently with Scott Green and Tabitha on this. We'll keep you updated on that. Okay? And again, I'll answer any questions you have on that. Progress, as you can see out there, it's really coming along when we're releasing all the conveyance for some of these... Excuse me, some of these systems. That's when you know you're getting down to the final throes. There's four months left. The completion date is December 19th, 2019. And again, with all the rain and everything, we came to you with some... There's other changes that we've got inside this we're not prepared to bring to you yet. But we worked with Turner to bring that date, if you recall, was an April date. We've already brought that all the way back to December, which is great for the sheriff's office and the county. But as you can see, some of the things that... With progress that's going on so far. And some pictures. And I think we had a tour not long ago. I know we had a tour not long ago. And hopefully, that was helpful for all y'all to see what actually we're spending all this money on. And it is state-of-the-art. So schedule update, critical path. Again, substantial completion is 12/19/19. What that means is that the sheriff's office should be able to have benefit use of the facility. Final completion is closeout documentation, warranty stuff. And that kind of hinges on some contractual language inside the CMTRIS contracts. But substantial completion means that the sheriff's office should get the ability to occupy the building, get a certificate of occupancy. But we're not going to let them move in if a painter needs to stand up on top of a desk to finish their work. Okay? That's... I see elevation is looking great, I think, out there. And that's what I've got. So I'll open it up for any questions. Sorry, I know we covered a lot.
Good brief. Any questions? Appreciate the tours.
Sure. We appreciate you guys coming out. We're always out there, so whenever you'd like to come out. I know it's a little hot out there right now, but you're welcome to come anytime. So love to have you.
Sheriff's space included the pool table. I really wasn't expecting that.
Not sure about that one. I'll have to get back to you on that one, Chairman.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Under Public Participation on Agenda Items, Mr. Benson, it says DBHDD updates? We may need a motion to put this on the agenda. It's not an agenda item.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. By way of background, we have a section of our agenda called Public Participation on Agenda Items. I don't believe this is an agenda item. That is a time for citizens to come in and speak to an issue that we are considering. We certainly have another procedure for non-agenda items, but submissions for that are required no later than 5 o'clock on Friday, the prior meeting. If there's a motion to add it to the agenda, that's certainly within y'all's purview.
Okay. Thank you. entertain a motion. It sounds like a worthy way to spend our time to get updated on this.
I'll make a motion. We add that to the public participation on non-agenda items.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kaker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll do it at the end. Okay. Hold on, Mr. Benson. We'll get you up here after we cover the new business. Thank you. We have two consent agenda items. Number one is the Paulding County Sheriff's Office request to retire Deputy Jason Cole's service weapon Glock 21 SWF 568. Deputy Cole meets the requirements to have his service pistol retired. And also, number two is surplus... To surplus 119 voting machines to return to the state of Georgia for destruction. And I'd ask at this time if any of the commissioners would like to move either of those two items to regular business. Okay. We have no old business. New business, number one, is discuss action to adopt Resolution 19-18, setting the millage rate for Paulding County Maintenance and Operations. Ms. Pollard?
Well, we completed the requirements to have three public hearings, to set the millage rate beyond the rollback rate. And this year's proposal is 6.079, which is identical to last year for maintenance and
Questions? Comments? Let me just say that, you know, it started out on June 1st. Commissioner Davis talking about the budget taking a long time. We spend a lot of time on this, and it's for obvious reasons. We want to get it balanced and get it right. And we started out there in the chairman's budget because of some personnel needs and also capital upgrades to the county that we need. We have plenty of needs, don't we? But let me just say, it's been a pleasure to work with the board and to find ways where we could lower the millage rate and still accomplish some of these personnel goals and capital expenditures that are needed for the benefit of the county.
Tabitha, I would just like to say thank you for explaining and re-explaining and re-explaining. This is my first big budget. I didn't take it lightly. But Tabitha, you're awesome. Thank you.
Thanks. It's been a pleasure.
Has it really been a pleasure?
It's been a pleasure. This is completion day. Let it be a pleasure.
Which budget for you is this, Tabitha? Which number?
I'm sorry?
How many years?
Oh, about 15. Total 21 government years.
Add to the thanks. A great job.
And I'm just like Sandy. I'm so thankful for the way that you hung in there with us. I know it was tough, and you gleaned us a lot of knowledge. But I also want to thank all these department heads, because they do have needs, and I don't think anybody came in there with anything that was frivolous. So I know everybody sacrificed somewhat, and I want to appreciate everybody for just really, you know, buckling down and helping us achieve this number.
All right. New business, number two, is discuss action to adopt Resolution 19-19, setting the millage rate for the fire district.
This is a requirement that you set a millage rate for each one of these taxing jurisdictions. These funds are used to provide service to the fire department, and this millage rate is proposed to be identical to last year's, 3.1. And several years ago, it went to vote for up to five mills.
Questions? Comments? New business, number three, is discuss action to adopt Resolution 19-20, setting the millage rate for the county board. I'm sorry, for the county bond.
This provides funding for the debt service. This year, we're adding some amount because of the jail, which was on the ballot in 2016, I believe, for the 72 million. And we're seeing the jail come to completion, and we're required to add a millage rate to provide funding for that debt. required to add an, a millage rate to provide funding for that debt. So we're going from 2.07 to 2.2.
Number four, discuss action to adopt Resolution 19-21, setting the millage rate for the Pauling County School District.
Because you are the taxing jurisdiction, the school district holds their own public hearings, and then they send a letter to us stating what they would need their millage rate to be set at, and that letter, this year, the request was 18.75, and that's a slight reduction from the previous year of 18.879.
Number five, discuss action to adopt Resolution 19-22, authorizing the tax commissioner to retain 2.5, a 2.5% fee for the collection of the school tax.
During tax bill time, Bill Watson will send out, he will include the school system on the tax bill the county sends out, and so this is a reimbursement for some of those fees. And it's also includes the assessment, we all participate in that process. And state law will allow the commission to adopt this resolution and retain 2.5% to
Number six, discuss action to adopt the fiscal year 2020 budget.
I put copies of the budget back in the back, and I don't know if everyone received those, but this budget went from the 6.5, again, that was proposed on June 1st, down to 6.079, so you have a reduction in revenue. It, to get there, we delayed some of the expenses, mostly in personnel, from this year to next year. So you have some expenses that will be in 2021 that are as a result of, of this, of this budget. Particularly, the original budget had all of the personnel added in. This has staggered positions, so it's the same person, most of the same personnel, but the expense won't be as high in 2020 as the full cost will be incurred in 2021. We did, we, it does reduce, the pay raises went from 5.1 to 4.0%, and it staggers the positions, and particularly some of the larger, those are maintenance and operations, so that's your general fund, which is your first column there. Another change that's made across the page is the SPOST, and there's an additional amount for recreation, because they have funds left from previous year, and so I added 1.2 million dollars for their fund balance to be used. And under the CIP, we had, June 1st, there was an estimate of how much of the bond proceeds for the jail would be utilized, and this better states that number as where it is today, as opposed to where it was on June 1st, because our fiscal year didn't end until June 30th. So those are the major changes. Not a lot.
Take an opportunity to commend George Jones and his department, Department of Transportation. We started out with a $3 million resurfacing. Everybody's been driving around, old cars for road, 92, well, 92 is done by the state, but there are a lot of other county roads that are being upgraded, and it sure is nice to see those. Pastor Gaddis, actually, he's left now, but he was bragging on the road he lives on. A lot of subdivision roads, a lot of the roads, so as far as the budget goes, we, we cut that in half, but we're, per our DOT directors' input, we're able to review that in January and add the additional half that we've taken out to get to the 6.079 mils. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we're only at half the resurfacing in the rest of 2019 and 2020. Want to make any comments on that, George?
No, I'd just like to say to the board, I'm appreciative of the support that we get, and we look to do the best job, you know, what we have to make sure the roads are as safe and as efficient as possible. Thank you.
All right, moving on to number seven, discuss action to-
Can I interrupt for just a second? I would like to thank, we want to thank y'all, because y'all have taken the time out to listen to every department, and they, and to their needs, and that's not always easy to do, it's very time consuming. So on behalf of myself and all the department heads, we want to thank y'all for taking, for listening and trying to weigh in what's best for Pauling County. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Number seven, discuss action to approve change order number four, not to exceed $444,609 for improvements involving security, door hardware changes, access control, security monitoring, and kitchen equipment for the Pauling County Adult Detention and Law Enforcement Center. This is an increase to the existing construction contract with Turner Construction Company. Funding is available from within the program bond, from within the program bond proceeds. Mr. Green.
Thank you. I just wanted to introduce this item before Amy can present the detail to you and take questions. Just to let you know, you know, as we heard, we're entering the last six months of this project, and things are winding down, so the good news is there's light at the end of the tunnel. But we are here today asking for approval of more work, and we want to give that to you. But I can tell you, at, at the staff level, with working with Bruce Coyle and the program team and the Sheriff's Office, we have questions, we have always questioned everything in detail. But in an overview, two of the biggest questions are, will it make it safer, and will it operate more efficiently? So we're looking for the long-term results, and I can assure you, the team is doing a great job looking at the long-term benefit to the county and operating the facility once it's complete, not just getting the doors open for us and handing over the keys. With that, I'll turn it over to Amy and let her talk about this item, and then I'd like to have a final remark or help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Amy.
Thank you, good morning. I just wanted to run down kind of the, the big ticket items on this change order. I know anytime that we bring a change order to you in general, there's probably lots of questions, where, where these came from, you know, what, what's happened to, to bring this forward to you. The majority of this change order, like Scott had said, it is associated to security enhancement and revisions. In a project this size, this is not uncommon. I give Colonel Hunton and the sheriff a lot of props on all the work that's gone into really trying to look forward for this building as far as operational. And when you're looking at drawings originally, when you're doing the design, it's extremely difficult to really get a good understanding on how you really want to run the facility, especially if you're coming from a smaller facility, upgrading to something of this magnitude. So these changes are really from the development of the building. Now that the walls are up, you know, it's, it's a lot easier to go in and kind of see and get a very good idea on changes that would be needing as far as the, the operation of the building. So just want to make sure that, also that we're, we're doing a great job being stewards of the county's money. We want to make sure that all of these changes are not costing you more today as at bid day. And I know we, you know, we say that a lot, but if we were to wait, you know, say a couple months on some of these changes, for example, installing cameras or door controls, the work would be so much further progressed in the building that it would actually cost more to go back, tear out ceilings, tear out door frames. So I will say with, with these enhancements, that we are actually catching them before it is a major, you know, cost impact to you all. Couple other items that are on this change order are also some additional work for the sanitary line. We did, unfortunately, we, we found some more rock. We were able to mitigate the cost for this line, though, by taking a different route, trying to avoid the rock. So there was a lot of thought that went into that, so we didn't have to deal with any more rock issues. This should be the, the final, anything to do with, with rock at this point. Another change included on this, this change order is changing light fixtures in all of the chase areas. The whole rest of the facilities right now are LED lights, and that's done, obviously, for operational, long-term costs. There were lights in the chase areas that were not LED, so in order to really keep consistent and to look at long-term cost savings, we went ahead and approved that to be changed over to LED as well. So, and I'll take any questions that you have.
No questions? Scott got concluding remarks.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate that. And I just, one thing I want to touch on, just a personal story. As we're looking at this design, and we're having conversations with our maintenance staff, Jimmy Renfro's group and the maintenance staff, the sheriff, we're looking at, how's their job going to function in taking care of this facility? And just a small thing like taking out the fluorescent tubes. We didn't have those in the rest of the facility, but we still left them in the utility areas where you don't need a real attractive light, and it's a cheap fixture, and that's great, but it's still a four-foot fluorescent tube that's in this utility corridor that somebody's got to walk down and change a bulb. And, and if you've ever changed out your garage lights and things like that, these things break, and then glass shatters and goes all over the place, and that's the last thing you need in the jail, in the jail system, is a bunch of little glass shards everywhere, and as well as having to wrestle this stuff down these corridors and get it up, and get a ladder out and all that. So just a small example, we paid more cost upfront to get a better fixture, but this fixture's going to go a minimum of seven years before you have to touch it again, and then a lot of times it's going to go a lot longer than that. So that's less visits for our staff, less work orders, and so it pays for itself, but you have to pay for it now to get that savings long-term. So a lot of these costs that are upfront today will bear out in operational costs long-term, just as we did with the, the outdoor parking lighting. We took that in as a, as a county maintained facility with LED lighting rather than doing the leased lights, and we'll realize that savings forever, really. It'll pay for itself in four or five years, and then we'll have savings every year after that. So that's just one example of, of that, that was not a security item per se, and as well as the rock, you know, they, they were able to design around the rock, and we looked at it. We looked at a complete redesign of that sewer line, we looked at the cost of blasting the rock, and it's actually the last point where you tie in the sewer to the city system. So we're tied in now, and we've, but we've got to pay for a little bit of change in that, and, and we'll be able to move forward. But glad to say, you know, we are winding down, the building is up, it's looking great. And one other thing I want to add, those of you who were not able to get in on that tour we had a couple weeks ago, pretty much any Tuesday afternoon, Colonel Hunton has offered to take folks back through the facility, and it really helps if you hear it from his, his operational viewpoint and explains how the jail functions, how it really works for them. And it is a big change in how they operate, but it's a good change also. So you can contact Chad directly. I also expect that we'll, we'll have some tours arranged for groups that want to see this thing. We definitely want to do that before we open the jail. You don't want to be in there, say in March or April, that's a place you want to avoid. So if you want to see the facility, contact me or contact Colonel Hun or CPS team, and we'll make that happen. I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. And Amy. And just to echo, Colonel Hun puts out a great tour and very explanatory on how it will function, so if you get a chance, he's right there in the back, and he'll, he's offered, just made himself available even in the evening, so appreciate that, Chad. All right, new business number eight is discuss action on the appeal from the Development Waiver Review Committee decision on application 2019-03-W, a request by Qualusi Vineyards and Robert C. Gilbert pursuant to Pauling County Development Regulations 14.5.17. Robert Gilbert has appealed a decision of the Pauling County Development Waiver Review Committee to the Board of Commissioners. And Bob, I was just going to ask you to, to come up and make any comments, and then we might hear from one of the commissioners.
Yeah, my name is Bob Gilbert with Qualusi Vineyards. We're a new small farm winery in Post 4, and we're here to appeal the decision of the, of the Development Waiver Review Committee to run a, what we consider a very expensive water line to within 500 feet of our building, which is under construction right now. And we have, with the help of Brian Stover, reached an agreement that we think is workable. Also, the Fire Marshal has weighed in on this, and I believe that he's, he's also going to work with us on this, so I would like to ask that our appeal be tabled until we can work out the details, but I believe this is something we can work with. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Hi, Bob. Recommend maybe table it until October the 8th of this year, gives time to, been working with Joey, Chuck, Jason, Ron, Sandy, Dave, I mean, we've been working hard, trying to, scratching our head. Got a good idea out of the box, kind of thinking come in the last week or so, so this, I think, will give time for you and engineers to design and work with the fire department to make this happen, so I'd ask for like, maybe October the 8th as timeframe.
Okay, that's, that sounds suitable to me, and I would like to thank everybody that has worked on this, and I really appreciate your cooperation on it. It'll really help us out, because we're in the process of trying to get open, and we're, you know, the high-water mark alone and a high-risk part of, part of this, and so it's really critical to us to get, to get open, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. Looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, thanks. I want to thank Chief Barron, too. We reached out to him for, you know, when you talk about code and, and stuff that gets adopted through this fire process, there's a lot of it out there, and, and he was real instrumental in making sure that we looked in the right direction and helped Brian and I with that. Thank you, Chief.
Ms. Meredith, you've got that all handled, right? You don't, don't need any guidance from me, for sure.
Yeah, we would need to, it'll still be on the meeting that you've been asked, but it'll just be a motion.
Okay. Very well. Number nine has become Mr. Don Benson to speak on behavioral health, and Mr. Benson, thank you for being here and updating us on this very important item.
My name is Don Benson. I represent Pauling County on the Region Advisory Council for DBHDB, Region 1, and what we did this past year is we developed a survey that was administered out to the public for opinions and comments on what the Department of Behavioral Health can do better, and we're in the process of doing the meta-analysis of that data, and hopefully sometime around October, I'll be able to divulge the information that was concluded in that survey. One of the other things that I do is I advocate for collaboratives. The Department of Behavioral Health had their first collaborative that was west of I-75 over in Cartersville last month, and those are for mental health professionals and providers to get together and see who's doing what and exchange ideas for doing better services to those who have mental health difficulties. I'm advocating that we have one here in Pauling County to promote unity and exchange ideas and services that we do for those who have mental health challenges here in this county. I attended a peer workforce development conference up in Athens last week. The Department of Behavioral Health is focused on advancing peer support services, which means that a person who has a lived experience with a mental health issue can help other people go through the process of finding services, help them reduce the recidivism rate both in jails and in hospitals, so that they have a better quality of life and can become productive citizens. And- can become productive citizens and eventually taxpayers as we all are. So that's all I have at this time, and I thank the county for allowing me to advocate for services in our county. We do have the need, our opening for two more individuals that, to serve on the Region Advisory Council from Pauling County. Right now, my term will be up in December, and I'll be asking that you extend my term and vote me in. And then if anybody else has any individuals that would like to be involved in the Region Advisory Council, feel free to contact me. I'm actually on the recruitment committee. There are some counties that don't even have any representation, and that puts them at a disadvantage to voice their concerns and issues that they have within their own localities. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Don, and if I can talk with you afterwards, I'd appreciate that opportunity. Do you have something, Chad?
Yeah, we had, we actually have. I've solicited for one person, and I've looked at, I've been talking to three others and sent them an application, so hopefully we can gather up those two people to get them on the board here soon.
All right. That's the conclusion of the regular business. I've got an announcement that is very important and very exciting. It's going to happen on September the 14th. It's the Second Annual Ride for Wishes, which comes under the Ride for Wishes Foundation to, how many of y'all rode last year? I know some of you did. Ron? Yeah, no, Scott did. We got a picture. But Baker Street, if you would just add a little more about where the funds go and-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will be our second annual event. The event is in connection with Make-A-Wish Foundation and Georgia Make-A-Wish. 100% of the proceeds go to the, to Make-A-Wish Foundation to grant wishes for children. So really pleased with that, but if you need any information, just go to our website, the county's website. Team Pauling is pleased to present this, and we've got a lot of, a lot of folks from various departments that are working with us, fire department, finance, you name it, water department, everybody's working towards this goal. So again, we just like to get it out there. I appreciate the opportunity to make that announcement, and if you have any questions today, if you're out here in the audience, Felicia Wommack from my office is here, and I think she actually has some packets there. If you're interested in taking a look at the information, she's got it for you. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Very safe. It leaves right here. Gets on the silver comet, and you're done on Saturday by 9:00, so you can go with the rest of your day. We do have a requirement to go into executive session for real estate, and I'll entertain a motion that we do that.
I'll make that motion, Dave.
Motion by Mr. Davis, or second?
I'm second.
Second. By Mr. Stover, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned for executive session.